Okay. Very good. Well, I will call the October 2nd, 2020, 2024 meeting of the Lebanon City Council to order. Council Simon, would you listen to the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, as I was saying to folks, Council Heist will not be joining us tonight. I don't know about Council Zook. She's not online.
She's not going to be here.
She's not going to be here either? Okay. So it'll be down to seven of us. Okay, we have a limited number of folks in the audience tonight, but that's great. So do you want to give your spiel first?
Oh, I'd be overjoyed.
Please do.
This meeting is being conducted according to provisions of RSA 91A. It's being conducted here in the council chambers. It's also live streamed to the city's website. There's a virtual component through Microsoft Teams and it's a phone component. The virtual components can all be located, again, on the website and the live meetings page. And if you have any difficulty accessing any of those components, you can email me and I'll try to assist you as best as I can. The email address is located on that live meetings page. If there's a problem with any of those virtual components, the meeting will continue because the only requirement is to have a meeting in person. If you are remote and you wish to participate, when public comment is allowed for, and there'll be plenty of opportunities for that this evening, all you need to do is unmute yourself and state your name and the ward in which you live. If you don't live in the city, the jurisdiction in which you live. If you're in the council chambers and you wish to speak, you can either do it from that podium there or from this table here. You have to get pretty close to the mic so folks who are remote can hear you and it can be recorded. And again, you need to state the ward that you live in. If you live in the city, if you don't live in the city, the jurisdiction in which you do live. I want you recognized by the mayor. Sir.
Thank you very much. So we start all of our meetings with a brief session where we open up to the public to discuss briefly any items that are not specifically on tonight's agenda. So I'll go to our audience here in the room with us first. Do any of you have any items that are not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to discuss? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the virtual audience. Anyone in the virtual audience with any items that are not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to briefly discuss? Okay, seeing none, I have an item. So as we are, as we're approaching fall here, I would like to, to thank everyone, both on the council, and I know that Councils Wilkie and Assistant Mayor Bealow and his spouse are actively involved in this, and outside folks who are, who have sponsored or been responsible for the really great looking flower beds that we've got around the green here and in downtown West Lebanon. A lot of work. I was just, you know, driving around today noticing it and seeing how beautiful it looks. And I think sometimes, you know, we drive by and we take that stuff for granted, but it's really great that people step up and do that. And this year in particular, at both locations, has really been beautiful. So thank you to those of you who did that. Thank you to anyone in the audience that's been involved, and certainly thanks to all of our sponsors. I hope we can do it every year. So thank you very much.
And the artwork that is in the tunnel that Arts and Cults and.
And the artwork that Arts and Cultures.
And the things that, the events going on on the green, the different groups that are doing that create that vibrancy in our city and that sense of place and what people are looking for in a place to live.
Some great work by everybody, everybody. Thank you very much. I wish my yard looked as good. So recognitions, we've got a recognition tonight for Alicia Robinson. Is Alicia with us online?
Oh, good.
Alicia, you there?
Yes, Mayor McNamara, I'm here. Let me get my camera on.
How are you? We're missing you.
I am well. I'm missing you all very much as well.
So we would like to, we would like to stand and have a resolution honoring you and all the great work that you have done for us, and we wish you were still here. So this is a resolution honoring Alicia Robinson. Whereas Alicia Robinson joined the city's, City of Lebanon's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission in the summer of 2022 and was elected to serve as Chair of the Commission in February of 2024. And whereas Alicia has been an integral member of the Commission, organizing the city's now annual Juneteenth celebration and helping to develop our first equity plan. And whereas she began her term as Chair with a discussion and public hearing on the ceasefire resolution proposed by residents of Lebanon and led that public hearing with exceptional poise and attention to the statements and concerns of the city's residents. And whereas in all her work with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, Alicia has acted with a high level of respect and thoughtfulness towards the city's residents and their needs and wishes, as well as a strong passion for finding lasting, effective, and inclusive solutions for the city. Now therefore be resolved that the Lebanon City Council, on behalf of the City of Lebanon, hereby recognizes and honors Alicia Robinson on the occasion of her departure from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission and thanks her for her service to the city. Be it further resolved that this resolution be written upon the minutes of the Lebanon City Council meeting and a copy presented to Alicia Robinson dated the second day of October 2024 to McNamara, Mayor, on behalf of Lebanon City Council and of all the residents of Lebanon. Thank you so much. And we hope that someday you will return.
Thank you, Mayor McNamara. Thank you, City Council and members. I'm sorry if you hear my grandson in the back. He is with me tonight, but it has been my pleasure to serve the City of Lebanon. I could not have asked to work with a more progressive or intentional city council. I thank you all for all of the support that you have provided for all the events and initiatives that we have put forward. And I do hope to return to Lebanon and serve you again someday. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much and good luck. We'll get that to her. We have a mail address. All right. The next item we have on our agenda is approval of the, or at least consideration of the approval of the minutes from Wednesday, September 18th. This is the regular council meeting. Does anyone have any questions regarding the minutes as presented or changes? I have one potential amendment, and I, maybe that I'm just not recalling things correctly. But on page 24 of 66 at the top, line two, it says that, turn that off.
What page, 24 you said?
24 of 66. It says Assistant Mayor Bealow asked if the plan considers some of the improvements proposed and in progress at the intersection of Mount Support Road and Route 120 Lehar Drive. I remember you asking that. Then it says Mr. Tommy Boston stated that these had been incorporated into the plan and the recommendations will be updated reflect the improvements. None of the presenters was a Tommy Bo, was there one?
He was the VHB traffic.
He's the VHB guy? Okay. All right, great. So I don't need to change that then. That was the only one I had. Does anyone else have any amendments, changes, corrections? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented in the packet of October 2nd, 2024.
Thank you. Council Wilkie makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Counselor Hill seconds. And I am saying names, trying to be very careful to say names because we have a new recording secretary with us this evening, and she doesn't know all of our sounds yet. So I will try to make sure I recognize everyone. So the motions are made and seconded to approve the minutes as written. Any discussion? All those in favor? And it is unanimous among the members present. Thank you. Okay, appointments. We have a couple of appointments to consider tonight. The first one is Benjamin Carter as a citizen representative for the Economic Development Commission. And I believe that Benjamin was interviewed by Counselor Whittlesy. Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, so spent some time with Benjamin. You know, he's obviously very interested in the space. It aligns with his academic research as a PhD postgrad. He's, you know, he's a very smart guy. I think he's, you know, can develop quickly some very good insights. And I think having him on EDC will be a benefit. So nominate him for appointment.
Thank you. That does not require a second. Are there any questions of Counsel Whittlesy regarding this potential appointment?
That's good.
Okay. And I will call for vote. All those in favor? And it is unanimous. And Mr. Robinson, uh, Mr. Carter, sorry, Mr. Carter is appointed as a citizen representative to the EDC. The next potential appointment is an alternate member of the planning board. This is Eric Stacy, who was interviewed by the city manager. Would you like to speak to that?
As you know, I interviewed with the team, the planning director, Deputy City Manager David Brooks, and then Andrew Fauntz, who's the chairman of the planning board. And we did a lengthy interview with Mr. Stacy, and I am placing him in the nomination for an alternate member. We are fortunate now, we are full, with full positions.
Oh, nice.
And yes, and we actually have another alternate coming in next week, and that there was just one alternate position open. We were in pretty dire straits, and now we've been able to recover from that. So I'll place Mr. Stacy in the nomination for that position.
Any questions of the manager, or I see that Chair Fauntz is also on the line with us. Any questions regarding this potential?
Certainly looks like he brings a, a lot of really practical perspective and background in real estate. So it'll be good to have a knowledgeable voice on the planning board.
Great. Okay. Well, all those in favor? And it is again unanimous among the members present. Thank you. And thank you to, to Mr. Stacy and Mr. Carter for volunteering. Okay, our first public hearing tonight, actually our only public hearing tonight, regards ordinance number 2024-12. This is to amend City Code, Chapter 31, Boards, Committees, and Commissions by deleting and repealing Article 4, Board of Assessors. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2024-12 to amend City Code, Chapter 31, Boards, Committees, and Commissions by deleting and repealing Article 4, Board of Assessors. And we'll start with a presentation by staff, and then we'll open the public hearing.
So this is based on an 1846 law that created, allowed for creation of boards of assessors. And back in those days, how assessments are done, a lot of them with the amount of farm animals that you actually had, and they assessed taxes on those. But they didn't have the standards we have today. Just to fast forward today, Assistant Mayor Bealow knows a little bit about this. He was involved in the process to help create the standards with the assessing standards board. So now it's a profession like pretty much all of our municipal positions. They used to be volunteers and those sorts of things. But the Board of Assessors, towns and cities had those, and they actually went out as a, as a group and looked at each property and made a determination as to what the value of that property was. Of course, that doesn't occur anymore. Today, we have companies that do the, contractors that go out and do the actual assessments, and then the assessor makes the determination of the value, and that's placed in the grant list of properties. So a Board of Assessors, basically, we had one that resigned, we had one that's left, and one that his term is up and he's not renewing. And we've had great difficulty in getting a quorum to meet. There are practical things that they have to do in terms of signing the tax warrant, signing the MS1, which is again, the accumulation of all the assessed properties in the different categories. That's part of the tax rate setting process to get that done. There are very few entities that still have boards of assessors left, and there's a list that we have provided in the document. I won't go through those again in terms, it's a couple of towns and some cities, but most of them have been abolished. Because basically, they, they really don't have the ability to go out there and assess valuation. Probably rely upon the experts to do that. The appeals process is in state law in terms of the BTLA and then also the Superior Court. But again, most of those are addressed by the actual contract assessor that we have. People meet with the assessor and a lot of those issues are worked out in terms of his errors or differences of opinion. They work that out, and very few actually go to the appeals process. So we're recommending abolition of the, or repeal of that provision of City Code to eliminate the Board of Assessors.
And we had a presentation, our last being from Brian Ware, who is one of the assessors with regard to this as well.
Yes, I was going to say, and he's the last remaining assessor, but he gave a very thoughtful recap of his involvement and his confidence in the professional contract assessor and the route that this is going. So that was reassuring to hear.
So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this, and I'll start with folks in the audience. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments regarding this potential repeal of the Board of Assessors? Okay, nobody in the audience. Anyone in the virtual audience? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead then and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and potential decision by the council. Does anyone have any additional questions on this matter? Would you be interested in making a motion?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Bealow?
I'll move that the Lebanon City Council hereby adopts ordinance number 2024-12 to amend City Code, Chapter 31, Boards, Committees, and Commissions by deleting and repealing Article 4, Board of Assessors, as presented in the October 2nd, 2024 City Council Agenda Packet. This ordinance shall become effective upon passage.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor Bealow. Do we have a second? Counselor Hill seconds. Is there any further discussion? All, yes. Counsel Sykes?
Thank you. I, I just was a little, this ordinance shall become effective upon passage. Would it, should it say this ordinance change shall become effective upon passage? Because it's, or I don't, I'm just curious if, if that was the right language.
Well, it is an ordinance. When you make this change, you're making an ordinance.
The whole ordinance will be adopted.
Well, it's page code.
It's page 37 of the packet.
Right, but we do it by ordinance. That's an issue that still has to be resolved. The City Code and the city ordinances, and the way ours is written, when you make a change to City Code, it's an ordinance.
Yep.
But that term ordinance is what other towns and cities use to actually, that is their code.
Yeah.
So we, that's a language that has to be cleared up at some point here. It's what, some of that housekeeping work that has to get done, as we're moving through those every year. And you know, we've got, try to changes every year we're making.
I'm, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? And it is unanimous among the members present. Thank you. We have no items of old business this evening. We have several items of new business. The first one is authorization of the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease and operating agreement with the Lebanon Outing Club concerning the Storrs Hill Ski Area.
Mr. Coats, who's remote?
All of you there?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. Evening. This is Paul Coats, Director of Recreation Arts and Parks for the city. And as you know, the city has had a long-term operating agreement with the Lebanon Outing Club for operation of ski oper, for ski activities at Storrs Hill Ski Area, which is owned by the city and operated by the Lebanon Outing Club. The lease that we have been operating under was recently renewed back in, I think it was 2019. But since that time, the outing club has been searching for various new ways. Some of these per the city council's encouragement to find new ways of generating some revenue for the outing club, so they're not quite as dependent on, on gifts and whatnot, that they can generate some extra revenues to help themselves operate, but also potentially to make the hill a greater asset for the city to consider ways to have additional revenues coming in. This is one step towards that. The lodge itself has been going through various stages of some renovations. We have other ideas coming down the pike. And, but one, one thing that's coming around right now is that they wanted to upgrade the kitchen, which they've done. It's now a licensed commercial kitchen, thanks to their, their efforts. And what they would like to do is be able to regularly serve alcohol, namely beer and wine during special events and key nights when operations sort of lend itself to having something like that going on. So there are some very special events, like concerts that they're holding in the summertime, and some public skiing nights, when it would make sense for them to have a small beer garden that's separated and follows all the rules and regulations that the state's liquor license would provide for them to do. So this previous year, the city council granted them a one-year license, I suppose that's called, a permit to be able to serve regularly. That turned out to be a great benefit to the outing club, and this lease is sort of making this more of a, an official granting of, of how that relationship will work between the outing club and the city and the general public. It spells out some of those details. It was really modeled by Drummond and Woodsum after the same type of lease that we extended, that the city extended to the Lebanon Opera House for the ability to serve during opera house functions. Happy to answer any questions about the nature of the lease or any details that you want to discuss.
Any questions of Paul? I know there was a lot here to digest. It took me a while to go through it, but I understand it primarily relates to the alcohol situation as opposed to other elements of the lease. The name would like to make a motion? Yes, Counsel Wilkie.
Counselor Wilkie, I will move that the Lebanon City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease and operating agreement between the City of Lebanon and the Lebanon Outing Club concerning Storrs Hill Ski Area as presented in the October 2, 2024 City Council Agenda Packet.
Thank you, Counsel Wilkie. Do we have a second?
Second, my Counselor Simon.
Counselor Simon seconds. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? And it is unanimous among the members present. Thank you. Our next, our next item of new, thank you, Paul. Our next item of new business relates to the authorization for the city to acquire approximately 2,220 square feet from Grafton County Senior Citizens Council Incorporated. Would you like to give a?
Mr. Brooks will take care of that.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes, as, as the council's well aware, one of the recommendations of the 2016 downtown visioning study was to, to, to identify the, the back parking lots behind City Hall, between City Hall and the river, as an opportunity site. So over the last couple of years, we've been looking at this area and studying it. A couple of years ago, we did a request for interest, expressions of interest, and generated several, several reports and presentations there. More recently, we've been doing a more in-depth study. And over the course of looking at this area, it's come to light, or it's been, you know, it's been noted that a portion of the Grafton County Senior Citizens Council property, located 10 Campbell Street, physically extends under what is now the city's parking lot. So looking into the matter a little bit further, this was first pointed out in 1996, before even the parking lot was there, or this portion of the parking lot was there. But it was never acted on at that time. They offered to, to convey a portion of this property to the city at that time, but it was never acted upon. And so for the last several months, it's, it's been sort of a slow progress, process. The city's been working with Grafton County Senior Citizens Council, communicating with them about potentially conveying this land yet again. And their board agreed to do that. They've agreed to convey the land to, to the city at no cost if the city will pick up the cost of the survey, which we have, and preparing the applicable deeds and getting those recorded, which we will. So we've, we've contracted with a surveyor to prepare a potential boundary line adjustment plan with Grafton County Senior Citizens Council. It's, that plan is in the packet, and it shows about a 2,220 square foot area of land which we would acquire. The, the shape and the configuration of that area is, is driven in part by the location of the city's parking, as well as a couple of, of large trees that exist. The, the Senior Citizens Council specifically asked if the line could be drawn such that those trees would become part of the city's property, because the city has access to some liability protections as, as a municipality that they do not have access to. So that's part of how that line got drawn. But in, in short, if the city council authorizes the acquisition of this property, then we'll proceed to the planning board with a boundary line adjustment application, and then we would expect to remove, approve, record the approved plan and the appropriate deeds following that process.
Thank you. Any questions for David? Okay, would somebody be interested in making a motion?
Sure. This is Counselor Whittlesy. For the purpose of acquiring a portion of a parcel of land situated at 10 Campbell Street, Lebanon Tax Map 92, Lot 23, approximately .05 acres here and after the property from the Grafton County Senior Citizens Council Incorporated, it is hereby resolved that the Lebanon City Council pursuant to its authority under New Hampshire RSA 47:5 to purchase real property hereby designates and authorizes the city manager to act on behalf of the city council to undertake all actions and obligations of the city and execute all documents as may be required to complete the city's acquisition of the property free and clear of all liens and encumbrances.
Thank you, Counsel Whittlesy. Do we have a second to that motion?
Counselor Wilkie will second.
Thank you, Counsel Wilkie. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion? And it is unanimous among the members present. Thank you. Next is a discussion of the proposed acquisition of West Burgh Yar, the Unending Saga.
It's only been 25 years.
Yep.
So the last 25 years, the city's been trying to acquire this. It's gone back and forth. I think most of you have heard this tale one times that I can possibly tell. You've been here longer than I have, most of you. So we've come down to the final language on that. I think you've all seen a copy of that. They've added some, some slight changes to that. I thought our attorney did a good job of making it clear, nice and clear language is what I prefer. So when normal human beings like us read it, who are not lawyers, we can understand what it means. But they, of course, that big DOT, have changed it a little bit. So they agree that they are responsible for the existing contaminants that exist on the site under existing environmental laws. That's the slight change under existing environmental laws. The concern, of course, would be that in the future, if environmental laws change, then their liability becomes far less clear, we say. So that's one of the concerns that, that's one of the key changes that they have made. Yeah, and that's, that's basically it. And then it talks about how they will assist the city if there are environmental laws. But that's, that fuzzy language, when push comes to shove, will be something that'll end up being challenged potentially later on, especially if it's an expensive cleanup. So we have to recognize that sort of risk if we're willing to take that sort of risk. So that's, that's the, the biggest part of it. And then there's other language, says to the extent that the, that the state would be, the seller would be liable for certain things as the, as the owner of the property under those circumstances. We've got some slightly different pushback language we're going to send in there, but other than that, that's where we are. Everything else, I think, is where we want it to be. We just have to be cognizant of that risk, and whether or not we're willing to take that risk. The other thing is, we've, we've changed the easement areas. Basically, they need an easement over pretty much the entire property. They have to be able to access that railroad bridge to fix it, which means they need to be able to drive trucks down there with, you know, whatever, whatever is required to do that. They need to be able to get the existing easement from that city road that we're building. They want an easement over that in case that, they don't want us to be too clever and put the road in and then declare it, close the gates and bars and they can't access the road. So they want an easement that goes down, which is fine, over the, over the existing roadway that we're going to be building. And they need to be able to get on the site to maintain the ground water management permit. So there needs to be an easement for that. So virtually, they have to be able to go over the entire property. So we're, you know, we're having our survey and draw that. I think you have that done already.
Done.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah. So that's really the last piece of that. So if we're good with that in the language, and you've seen the slight different language that Christine made, there's a couple of places that we're going to push back on that. But other than that, if we're comfortable with this, I'm going to move forward and say that, you know, we're, we're comfortable with the language, with the PNS, with the last minute changes that Christine made, and go through the process, the rest of the process. Hopefully, we can get it done before another 25 years goes by.
Hopefully. So.
And hopefully, we have somebody on the executive council that can, not that executive council one has not helped, but she's been very helpful.
Yes, she has.
But somebody who's actually from Lebanon who'll be able to help push that further.
So at this point, after all this work and all these iterations, this really, in my mind, comes down to a benefit risk analysis? I think we've tried to minimize the risk, and the risk is primarily, obviously, environmental liability. And I think the big question for the, for the council is that if this is what can be agreed upon by both parties, is this sufficient for us to, does it sufficiently justify, does the risks, is the risk justified, sorry, by the potential benefits of owning the property? So, you know, we've talked about what the property would be utilized for, and it's primarily open space recreation, right? We're not going to build buildings here. We could build parking. We could build a gazebo. But specifically in the lease here, we're not, we're not disturbing what's underneath. And in fact, we'd be isolating what's underneath from what we would do by an impermeable barrier. So we make sure we don't inadvertently disturb that. I think that from my perspective, anyway, the changes that have been made are suggested I think that, from my perspective anyway, the changes that have been made or suggested by Christine in Section 21, specifically E and F, are critical to my being comfortable with accepting whatever risk remains. And if you've had a chance to look at E and F, it's the purple addition here. I think it's really critical that the seller retains some liability, liability that they would be liable for if they were currently the property owner. I think that's critical language. And then, I think, in the next paragraph, the discussion of materials potentially discovered after the fact shall be deemed to be existing materials and substances under this agreement. So to me, those two things are really critical in trying to minimize our risk, because we don't know, you know, down the road, what's going to be found, what might be found. Certainly, we're not going to exacerbate the problem. We're going to be very clear about that, and we're going to document that very well to make sure that everybody down the road knows that we have not exacerbated the problem. And given that, it feels to me like we're sufficiently covered here. But I really want to get the consensus of the council on this, because this is critically important. So what other folks think? Yes, Counselor Whittlesey.
I guess I'm just concerned by the, right, because you think of it in like a typical like risk matrix, right? The probability is probably low, given our use and like current environmental regs, but that the actual cost of that risk is extraordinarily high. And I'm just, you know, the one that immediately comes to mind is PFAS, which we've been talking about. And that's just current understanding, let alone what else is going on. Plus, if it's still like active rail yard in that area, like what other like kind of cross-contamination could you see from like leachate or spillage or whatever, you know, flow? And I guess that's the part where, I mean, Christine's done a great job. I just, it feels very, much more open-ended than it should be, because who else is going to do anything with this land, right? For the exact reasons that we're concerned, because no one wants to take on this liability.
Right. And I think, I think that's a very valid concern, because you're right, that while the risk may be small, the potential cost could be high. I'm personally a little less concerned about PFAS because of the past and present utilization of the rail yard. You know, a lot of downtown West Lebanon, unfortunately, as I was saying to the manager and I know this firsthand from talking to my grandparents, is basically built on coal ash.
Right.
So I'm sure the entire downtown, if you sample here or there, is going to have a significant amount of contamination from that residual
Right.
coal ash. And so I think it's there, I think it's there forever. Nobody in the regulatory environment seems to be pushing the state too hard to do remediation. They seem to be okay with monitoring. Maybe that's because, you know, there aren't any drinking water wells downgrading to this, and so the receptors are pretty limited. But, by the same token, you know, that opening is there.
Right. I mean, that's, and that's my concern, right, is that it, we just don't know, right? And that's really where it's, because it's not like, it's not a, it's not a limited liability. It is an unlimited liability based off of a complete unknown for things that we might not even know to like be testing for, that we literally could not test for. And, you know, like, I'm comfortable with it from the standpoint of all the stuff we know. And I just use PFAS as the example, because that's the most recent, you know, change in environmental liability law. But like, that's where I just get concerned about taking on of what feels very one-sided, unlimited liability for things we just cannot fathom right now.
Real legitimate. Yes, Counselor Hill?
I certainly do understand that perspective and, you know, share that as well. I think that the mayor's analysis is really good. And I do think that we are minimizing our risk by limiting our use. And I think that with regard to sort of the open-ended nature of the liability that we're contemplating taking on, you know, we, the city, are already a big landowner. And I guess I'm not certain, I think we've done our due diligence to identify the risk. You know, we've certainly done a lot of work to assess what the, what the conditions are on the site. So those are, you know, extensive work, comprehensive. And I think, so we've got a good sense of what's going on there. And I think about things that are, that might come down the road in the future. I suspect we're going to be looking at liability on other property, you know, like, we're all going to, we all face a lot of unknowns in the, in the future. But I, it's, we're already a big landowner, and we face a lot of liability for, for, you know, potential and, you know, changes in environmental regulations that might come in the future. You know, that's kind of the nature of our business. We're in sewage, which is a big, we're in water and sewer, which is big. We have an airport, which is a big deal. We have a landfill. So, you know, if there are future environmental regulations that come down, we're likely facing, you know, a big, a big challenge. And I feel pretty confident that we'll be able, you know, we'll, it's not going to significantly increase our liability more than the open-ended liability that we already have by virtue of being a large landowner in the city of Lebanon. So I think that, for me, this makes sense at the time. I think we've gotten clear direction from the people of West Lebanon that they would like to see investment in downtown West Lebanon, that they would like to see the city do something with that property. This has been a consistent message to us for 25 years or more. And we've seen it in numerous places, in master plans, in charrettes, in the recommendations from the West Lebanon Revitalization Committee. So I think, given the public desire, the public sentiment to really turn this, transform this property from a, you know, from a, at least it's no longer an eyesore, but it's still not contributing to downtown vitality. So I think, given the, we've heard consistently from our residents over the years, and given that we are being responsible and minimizing our, the liabilities that we are taking on, and that I don't think that it substantially increases our liability vis-à-vis other property that we own, I think this is a good move for the, for the city.
So I wanted to respond to a couple, a couple of things that you alluded to. One, going back to our initial discussions with the state on the purchase, they were pretty much in a buyer beware situation, just, we're not doing anything. And so this does represent some movement on their part, so I do have to give them some credit for that. Secondly, you know, I tried to look at this not just as another playing field, or another, you know, public open space, but what does it do, what might it do to the revitalization
Oh, yeah.
of downtown West Lebanon. And if we don't purchase the property, the state certainly is not going to, at least, we don't think they're going to redevelop it. It's going to stay what it is, which is basically an overgrown field at this point. You know, if I thought the state was going to do something wonderful with it, I might not be quite so enthusiastic about the acquisition. But I don't believe they are. Yes, Counselor Sykes, Counselor Whittlesey?
So, with the, there'll be a barrier between the existing land and what we, and we put some kind of topsoil, yeah, fabric with the topsoil or something on top of it. And that will lead itself to a grassy field of some sort. I just want to be clear in my own mind, having seen this kind of thing elsewhere in the city, where a private owner tried to, wanted to use a piece of property and was not able to because of, I specifically talk about the 4U Gulf property where he wanted to use a portion of it and couldn't. We're very clear that we can have playing fields on this property if we treat it as described.
Yes. In fact, it's mandated in the lease that that's all we can use it for.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that we
The purchase and all agreements, sorry.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we can, that's all. I know I've, we've talked about it, and I just want to reaffirm it.
Well, I think it's a good point, because we've been talking about this for 25 years to go over this again.
Yes.
So no surface contaminants.
Yes.
It's groundwater contamination is the issue.
Yeah.
It's fairly deep.
Well, that brings me to my next question. So, at one, if I may.
Yeah, that's fair.
At one point, there was, I believe petroleum products leaking into the Connecticut.
Correct.
Are they still doing so? And who owns that?
They would own it under these circumstances, because that's an identified contaminant. But they took steps, it was before I got here, so at least seven years ago, to stabilize that bank to prevent that from occurring. And we're not aware of any sheens that have been released in there, no reports of any. And there's none in the environmental assessments that they are required to do, the state or the groundwater management permit. So if there are any of those, we don't know about any of them. None have been reported to us. However, if you look at their report, there is the free flow of fuel in those wells when they do their water testing.
Right.
And there were recommendations by their own consultant to put in additional wells and take steps to address that, which they have never done. DES, if you, just going back a few more months ago, DES sent them a letter and said, hey, what about the recommendations from your consultant? What are you going to do with that? And they sent us a copy, which they never do, to bring that to our attention. And they have taken, to our knowledge, no action to address any of those items. They're still responsible for all those items in this agreement, as we have it now, the draft agreement.
So with the answers that you've given me, and the idea that, I mean, if there's one clear point that the citizens have made about wanting to see some better, better, more appropriate use of that location for recreation purposes and so on, I mean, I'm in support of the idea. Because I, I think there's, there's always, in my mind, a bigger need for additional recreational opportunities. We have plenty in the city compared to some places, but some sections of the city are less served than others.
There's just two sides of that. One, it is getting pretty hairy down there, the vegetation that's growing. And there are people that are living down there, and there's stuff strewn all over the place in terms of trash and bodily waste and that sort of thing that's down there, because it's not maintained. And the state has limited resources to maintain their properties, and we see this along the rail trail as well. We'll have it in a lot better shape, because we'll be maintaining it. The other part, too, just as a reminder, at least for now, the Dry Bridge project is supposed to start next year. It's a two-year project. That is the anticipated laydown area. So we're going to, instead of spending the money twice, when we, that gets all roughed up and torn up with the construction equipment there, when it's restored, which is funded as part of the project by 80% by the state, that's the time when we'd put down that fabric barrier and not have to deploy twice. It's already going to be torn up anyway. We'll get the advantage of that and reduce the cost. So there is some impetus to get this done. Now, granted, if we're all set to keep moving tonight, you know there's still quite a few steps in the process, and we'll be up against the summer of 2026 anyway, when we be done, the bridge project, at least if it stays on schedule, if all things go as planned, because we still have fiscal committee, we have the other committee at the state level, the executive council, and they'll have to do another appraisal of the property, because the one they had is too old, even though we've done three of them already. So, anyway.
Counselor Whittlesey?
Just a couple of quick responses. So, I mean, acknowledging that, yes, we do operate an awful fair amount of property. Like, I would distinguish between what we're doing with like the airport and some of our other properties versus the railroad yard, both in terms of scope of use, right? Because most of our properties are basically residential, except the exception of Spencer Street, which was on us, because we used it as, you know, for vehicle maintenance, right? Like, the airport, it's ours. We, the issues with, if there are ground issues with the airport, because of the airport, like, that's because we built it. You know, like, this, this is why it feels different for me. It's not us having liability for something because, that we built, maintained, owned, operated, right? Like, this is basically, like, my concern is taking on the liability for something that wasn't ours in the first place. So like, yeah, we have a lot of liability, but this is still net new, right? And so we're taking, and a potentially very large liability. And like, my other counterpoint is like, I totally hear that everyone wants this property and these fields. My concern there is just like, what they also don't want is higher taxes, which they've been very clear about as well. And like, if we are on the hook for an environmental remediation, it would, I would suspect at that site, for something that we would pay, have to pay for ourselves, would be vastly higher than what we paid for Spencer Street, which was not cheap. So like, you know, do we want to be, risk being on the hook for, I don't know, 20 million, 10 million, five? I truly, like, I don't know, but like, those are the numbers you're going to get into, depending on the scope. And that's, again, that's where my concern is. Like, again, the, do I think the risk is high? No, I do think it's a relatively small risk, but it is a very expensive outcome that we would have to deal with. And then you have all of the ripple effects of that. And I mean, you know, we kind of see this with the combined sewer project now of like, we have this unexpected cost. And how is that impacting us now? You know, so like, I just, I'm not saying it's analogous, I'm just saying like, we've dealt with these kind of situations with large, unexpected costs before, and the impact it drives, you know, a decade later, or in this case, probably decades. But, so I just, that's, again, that's where my concern is, is like, I would love to see this come to us. I'm just really concerned by the scope of what we're accepting to take it on. And it could all come to nothing. It probably will come to nothing. I just, I don't want it to go unsaid.
Real legitimate. Yes, Mr. Maybilla?
But to be clear, the proposed language in what would be new, or renumbered Paragraph F, well, provides that if there's a subsequent discovery of hazardous materials or regulated substance that weren't previously identified, but which can be determined to have preexisted the city's ownership, then the state's still accepting liability for that. So, maybe it would be better if it was written the other way around, that, you know, we'd only be liable if it was determined that we had caused it. But I think the language is pretty good as far as it goes. Because if, you know, if I was the state selling the land, you know, I wouldn't want to be responsible for anything more than the contamination that was already there, even if it's not determined that it was there until later on. So I think the city's planned use of it, there's just an extremely, extremely low likelihood that, you know, that would be the source of new contamination unless somebody went out there and dumped something illegally, and then we try to hold them liable. So, you know, I think on net, it makes sense to go ahead, because, you know, absent that, all this effort, you know, would be for naught, and it would just sit there and continue to not be a contributing piece of land to the city and, as others have said, the vitality and recreational needs of West Lebanon. The one question I did have is the limitation on what can be done with the property talks about only, where was it, only open-sided structures, it could be allowed, you know, like a coverover, a picnic pavilion or something like that. And of course, there is opportunity to really open up access and views of the river there, along with a trail that connects, you know, potentially from, from, what is it, Bridge Street, you know, all the way down. But it, I think it referred to, I was just wondering if there's any possibility of restrooms there or a portage on, if that would be allowed? Because if there are going to be recreational fields and people have scheduled games there, soccer games, whatever.
Farmer's market.
Yeah, you're going to need something, some kind of restroom or, and washing facilities. And I also kind of wondered, and maybe Paul Coats has looked at this, if there might be a need for, you know, storage shed of something to keep mowing equipment, or does that? to keep mowing equipment, or does that, can that all come in from other sites?
Yeah, that comes in by trailer. It would be porta potties. We do not want to start digging into that ground. We want to stay away from that like the plague.
So presumably, this would allow porta potties.
Oh, yeah, because it's not, you're not dealing with the surface. Yeah, you just put it there and all that's going to be most likely seasonal use anyway.
Yeah, and they make nice porta potties now.
Yeah, they do. Yep, that could do. That could work. Okay, just wondering if.
Yeah, I really don't want to be digging in that ground and put water lines in there or we just, we need to stay away from that. Because if we do, under this agreement, we're going to own that.
Yeah, right, right, right.
We're going to have to take that soil, we're going to send it to Michigan, and we know what that costs us. We've been through that before. It has this waste site that they've got there. We don't want to do that.
David, do you have a comment?
Yes, I was just going to say, there's an abandoned, not abandoned, a decommissioned sewer pump station on that property. As you look from South Main Street or Main Street, you see the top of it.
Concrete.
It's built into the bank. That has water, sewer power to it already. Paul Coats and I have looked at that with Public Works. And that's a possible venue for, or location for some storage or bathrooms possibly.
We're actually looking at demolishing that, but.
Or, okay.
Right, but could we demolish it and still use the existing water line?
We could, but it hasn't been used in years. I mean, I would stay away from it. It's so much cheaper to get a couple of porta potties where we have the soccer game out there than it is to mess around with bathrooms and then who's going to clean them and all that. That just becomes a number of issues. Most of us probably were softball coaches at one time and, you know, it was in Manchester and you have to deal with all that and it just doesn't face a lot of problems. Porta potties are the way to go.
Counselor Simon and Counselor Wilkie, what are your thoughts?
I don't think I have any thoughts that haven't been said. I do acknowledge that there is a risk when we're accepting this liability. But I also agree that it is a very small, potentially insignificant risk. And I think the work that's been done reassures me that I think this would be something that I'd be comfortable moving forward with.
Thank you. Counselor Simon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm not going to go into detail. It's already been covered. But certainly, the West Lebanon Committee feels it's an important piece of beginning the revitalization of downtown West Lebanon. I would like to at least see us continue forward. The pessimistic side of me says that this is a long way still from being done. So I fully support the manager continuing forward in his efforts and reserve my right to hold on judgment until I actually see it completed. Thank you.
I mean, I think, as I mentioned, that there's a couple of things that I would really like to see. Number one is that the state accepts the modified language. That, to me, is critical. And then the second is the appraisal. I mean, I've always assumed we would pay nothing for this property. And if they came out and said, oh, well, you know, we need so much for this, that would be a showstopper potentially for me. Because we've, you know, made this investment over 25 years into multiple studies and surveys and, you know, and we contributed the space for the demolition materials when the roundhouse came down. So we've made a significant investment in the property already and I would hate to have them think they're going to get any cash out of this. But that can't proceed until after there's an agreement on our agreement, so.
And just to follow up on that, the agreement does provide that the appraisal take into account the limited uses, the deed restrictions and the conditions and the, you know, the existing hazardous waste problem.
And the easement. We're going to have an easement over the entire property.
Right, all that.
We don't have exclusive use.
Should go into account with the appraisal, so, yeah. But we still have to see what that comes back at.
And DOT staff gets that? The question is, it has to go to fiscal committee. And you know how that goes. They may have a different view of this. And this is a gold mine and we want to, you know, sell for $5 million, you know. Hopefully that doesn't happen, but there's multiple steps we still have to go through to get this. Like any good bureaucracy, we have to go through it.
And given the rate of speed that they have shown us in the past, I anticipate a couple of weeks?
Yes, I would say at least a couple of weeks.
So, okay, thank you.
Ten years before I plan to retire, I'm hoping I can get it done before then. I'll give it, you know, a little bit more room.
Well, taking into account Counselor Widdlesy's concerns, which are all certainly valid, is there anyone here who really, who feels that we should not proceed at this point? Okay, then, yes, Counselor Hill.
Oh, there's no motion.
No, there's no motion.
Oh, I was so excited to make a motion.
If it comes back, you'll have to vote for the actual opposition, the proper.
Can we do this before March?
March of what year?
Ask your friends at the state.
Maybe you'll still get a vote someday.
Because it does have to go to the executive council, by the way. That's another one of those committees that has to.
All right, I'll get it here or I'll get it there.
Hopefully.
All right, so you've got your direction.
Yeah, well, you're on the negotiating team with me, so we have our direction.
You have, you both have your direction.
I know the directions to DOT, I can tell you that. Okay, so the last item of new business is my discussion of potential Sachem Village-Dartmouth Hitchcock Connector Project. David, could you put up the? And so let me, this is going to be a history adventure here. So many years ago, almost 20 years ago now, I was the Dartmouth Project Manager for the reconstruction of Sachem Village. And in the years that I spent down there helping to design and permit and then construct the project, I noticed a large number of students walking through the woods up to DH. So I walked up there, and again, we're going 20 years back, and I was astonished that I was there in 15 or 20 minutes, walking on the existing path through the woods. And, you know, I did a little bit of questioning at the time and it appeared that a lot of these students were third and fourth-year medical school students and their last two years of medical school are at the hospital, their first two years are on campus. And they were literally walking up to DH to go to classes. And so as I was sort of sitting down there starting to think about this, I thought, well, wow, you know, there's a potential here for a limited access road that emergency vehicles could use to get from the West Lebanon side of town immediately over to the hospital without having to either go through downtown Hanover or back around through Lebanon. And so I discussed it with the fire chief at the time and there was some interest in this. But it really never went any further than that. AT service at that point was very minimalist. There was not a whole lot of bicycle commuting. And so, you know, it just, it never got pursued. And so as I'm sort of ending my career at the college, I started to sort of think about things again. And here's where I want to be very clear who the initiator was. I realized that 20 years, hence, a lot of things have changed. Number one, AT has vastly expanded service. And in fact, they go into Sachem now on weekends and take students down to the Plaza and other locations. Dartmouth has its own shuttle service, both to Sachem and to Summit at Juniper. And lastly, there's a whole lot more of bicycle commuting, particularly since the advent of e-bikes. So I started to think about, you know, is this an idea that's worth resurrecting? And here's where I want to be very clear, because there are some rumors out there, that it was not the college or the hospital that came to me. It was me that reached out initially to the college and the hospital because they are the two property owners over whose property this would, potential limited access road would go. Both of them expressed some interest in it. So Rod Finley, our engineer, took a look at the existing topography to see if a road was actually feasible that was, had both the correct grades, turning radiuses, was outside of the 100-foot wetlands buffer, was outside of the conservation easement areas, and was outside of the designated ecologically significant areas. And he was able to come up with what you see here, which is simply a concept and one potential alternative, which would be about a 4,000-foot limited access road with a multi-use path alongside it. The college then decided on their own volition, and I had nothing to do with this, to ask one of their consultants to take a look at it. And they did that primarily with an idea of what it would do for public transit service. They were immediately able to determine that it made the Dartmouth Connector much more efficient because it could be a loop between Sachem and Summit at Juniper rather than two separate routes. And they had a brief conversation with Adams Carroll of AT and he expressed some interest. Now, since then, I've had a more extensive discussion with Adams. And before he could really say, yes, this makes a big difference to AT, he would have to do a study. He has indicated to me that he is willing to apply for a grant through Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Commission to do such a study. That would probably take several months if he gets the grant. But that's really a key factor here. If AT finds that this does not or would not improve their service significantly, then there may be no reason to go any further than this. But really, at the point this is at now, it is completely conceptual. It is all from me. But I think it's worth, if AT's willing to do it, worth AT taking a look at this. Now, there was initially some concern of, oh my God, this is a road from the hospital through Sachem and cars are going to go through here and it's going to be a mess. No, it would be gated, limited access roadway, only usable by public transit and by private transits like Dartmouth's connector and by emergency vehicles and by pedestrians and bicyclists. So it's not intended for to pull traffic off the access road at DH and into Sachem and, you know, ultimately onto Route 10. As I mentioned before, all of the land that this would traverse is owned by either Dartmouth and primarily by Dartmouth or by DH on the eastern end. So I've had some conversations with Sustainable Lebanon about a month ago. I'm going to have another conversation tomorrow, just basically to answer questions. But really, the ball now is in AT's court, if they choose so, to commission this study, assuming they get funding, and to see if this has a positive impact on them. This is not a tomorrow thing, likely not a next year thing. But I think, I still feel that it's a concept worth looking at. And George may remember when you were on the fire department.
I was going to actually go down a little bit of the history as well because in 1989, I proposed during site plan reviews for a portion of the hospital. And I was very much interested at that time to have a connector road that would be available for emergency services. I could not convince either the hospital or Dartmouth to buy into it at that time. But a lot has changed in the intervening years. I still, while I understand that you are looking at this from the point of view of public transportation, which is very important, I also think that one of the calculi that we should be doing is looking at, as my understanding is that Route 10, got to get the right route. Route 10, we're getting more ambulance calls than we used to up in that area. And to get to the hospital, it's adding to the, to the time it takes for a patient to get to the hospital. And if we can, if this can come to some kind of fruition, I think it needs to be, that needs to be part of the calculus because there's several things that happen by the current road structures from my viewpoint. One is that it's taking the ambulance crews longer to get to the hospital and then longer to get back in the station. And that that is, we already know that our resources for the fire service are stretched. And if we can get people back in service quicker, I see great value in that because it means they're more readily available for the next patient who needs them as opposed to, you know, not being available and having to call mutual aid, who will then face all the challenges that our service does in terms of coming down to Sachem or coming down to, goodness, the plus 15. Thank you. Quail Hollow, et cetera. It's just my perspective. I mean, I think that, I'm pleased to hear, though, that it would be a limited access for, you know, emergency vehicles and for public transportation and for recreational, a way to get bikes, et cetera, along there. I don't, I think that is a more viable plan than not, you know, than trying to make it an actual road. And I don't think that, you know, I'm not an engineer, but anyways, that's all. I've looked at this over the years and always thought that we should have done something then. And I think it's worth continuing to see, but not just from a public transportation point of view.
And even, I should say, even if AT determines that, you know, this would be a benefit to them, there are still many other hurdles after that. I mean, as I mentioned, this particular layout, which is, may not be the ultimate layout, if we get that far, has tried to minimize environmental impacts the maximum is not possible. But I've told the folks that have expressed concern to me that, you know, that certainly is going to be considered if this gets any further. Any other questions? Well, I will, I mean, right now, we're in a holding pattern with AT and we'll see what they do. Yes.
Just to double check this, because I think, I'm very interested in the idea. I'm not quite sure I see a clear benefit to advanced transit, but as I've mentioned to you in the past, I definitely recognize the potential benefit. I also know that right now, we are looking at dire financial situations for the city. We are looking at some pretty significant challenges maintaining our current roadways. And so I want to make sure I understand correctly that effectively, we're not putting any additional resources into this right now, certainly not putting any funding into this. We are waiting to see if AT is interested, pursues this study and finds positive result before the city continues to devote resources to considering this.
Absolutely. We're doing nothing until we hear back from AT.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Simon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Counselor Wilkie for once again asking just about what I was going to ask myself. So that wavelength is still going. And I just wanted to add that it would be remiss that, you know, granted, there was some information that may or may not have been fully vetted or understood that was passed around early on. But certainly, there was early significant opposition from many members of the public to this. And I just wanted to go on record as recognizing that I was contacted by several members of my ward in opposition to this. So as I told them, I'm looking to see more information before any decisions would even be made and hope that they continue to monitor and join in the discussion as the information comes forward. But for right now, this was asked and confirmed, I don't see why we wouldn't want to gather more information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to City Manager's report.
I have three items. I will go through them somewhat quickly unless I'm stopped. I have three items. I will go through them somewhat quickly unless some stopped. So item number one, Woolen Mill went for the planning board this past Monday, and they have approved changes to their site plan. As you remember, we, the council authorized a 79E exemption for the property for a period of 11 years. They have, the public improvements they're gonna make are, have been slimmed down considerably. The number of housing units they're gonna have has been reduced. We feel, administration feels that this should be reviewed by the council in terms of the 79E status. My suggestion would be that we have them come in at the next council meeting and explain the changes and whether, and then let them articulate why we should not, ask them to reapply for 79E. And as you know, we also have new, new policy on that, new requirements on that. And because of the changes, which I consider significant, the public value piece of that, which is a key part of the 79E component, that the council should revisit that. And unless the council has any objections, I plan to schedule that for the next council meeting, and that being on the 16th, and ask Mr. Lovattis to come here. And then after you speak to him, you can determine whether or not you will ask him to reapply. After, we'll give you some explanation about what the changes are, and then you can decide whether or not you want him to reapply. And then he can do that, and we can have another public hearing on that, and you can reconsider that at that time if you wish to do so.
Counselor Wilkie?
Thank you. Not opposition to that. I think that's a great idea. I do want to mention, this time wearing my Heritage Commission rep hat, we did recently discover that we were losing an historic smokestack in the city from the Mascoma Mill right down the road from here. And I'm curious if there's anything we can do to ensure that this smokestack is preserved.
I think they were gonna keep it last time I remember, right?
It is still on the plan.
Yeah.
It's on the plan. But there's nothing.
There's no formal protection or preservation, you know, guaranteed.
Thank you.
I think the issue is that the, what do you call it with the brick there, that's refacing. The mortar was coming apart. The bricks were falling off of that one. So they either, we're gonna either fix it, they don't use it, or demolish it, and they chose to demolish that one. I don't know what the condition of this one is, and I don't know if it's older or younger, or if anybody's done any repointing on it. So I really don't know the status of the one in the.
I've not heard that bricks are falling out of this one, as they were at the.
You could see the other ones visibly, yeah. I don't know the status.
Well, but the, that, the one that we're talking about, not the one being demolished, but that was recently used as part of their heating plant, when they put their, I think it was propane, heating system in for clean laundry. And that chimney was part of their use. So who knows? You know, maybe it's in better shape than the other.
So if that makes sense, that's the course of action I'm going to take, based on the observations we made. I think it's appropriate that you revisit that and have him come in and talk, talk about that. I just don't want to schedule it for a public hearing. I think there needs to be a discussion back and forth, and the grounds which to do that, and we'll go over that. And he can explain that, and we can go from there. All right, moving on. I went to the ICMA conference in Pittsburgh, and I want to kind of summarize that. It's important, I think, and I do this with my other staff. You go to a conference, you come back, share the information that you have gleaned from that. So I'm gonna go through quickly, and again, stop me, I got items A through Y in here. One of the things that was talked about is special interest groups, our swing, city councils. You'll have a small number of folks that will show up and advocate for something or oppose something, and there are very few people that may support it, depending upon what it is. And also, when they do surveys, they'll stuff the ballot box, as we say, and complete the surveys. And again, some councils apparently are, according to them, falling sway to this. I'm not so sure we have that going on here. But anyway, a lot of it tends to be some right-wing extremism, some left-wing, but less so, and then some special interest issues that are pointed on that. So that was, there's a lot of talk about that, how to deal with that. But I think that our council's pretty savvy about such things. And so, I don't know, I'm just mentioning that. Ethical responsibilities, when city councils push manage to do things that violate the law, I haven't seen that in seven years I've been here. So I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on that, but apparently it's an issue in other places. Workforce development, this was a big issue. And it's an issue where, when I looked at where we are compared to other communities, we're actually in pretty good shape as far as best practices and those sorts of things. But workforce development is one of the areas that we do have a certain degree of weakness. We've been trying to catch up on that. There's a, there's a town called Bondurant, Iowa. It's a smaller community, and they have their own leadership program. It's about a year long. There's actually seven people, and it's the cohort of different departments, to build that leadership, because we're not, we're having difficulty finding leaders outside. It's difficult to find people that do these jobs. So we've gotta grow our own leaders here. And, you know, we've done some of that, but not anywhere near the level I want us to be. We send people out for training, but we don't have our own program. And, you know, we have almost 200 full-time employees and 344 employees altogether. It's an area that I want us to focus on, because it really is absolutely critical, that we replace ourselves with people who are ready to do the job, and we give them those opportunities to do that. And the younger generation, people are looking for that. They want to, they need that help to be better leaders and the skills necessary to do their job. So that's an area that we're gonna be focused on as we go into the next year. You can, the mayor already talked about this, but the focus on sense of place, quality of life, surveys at other communities are fine, that is at the top of the list. People want to live in a place that has the quality of life, which we have a pretty good quality of life here. People say that. I say it. I've only been here seven years, again, and this is a great place to live. I think it is. There are things that we have been doing, and the volunteer work, as the mayor indicated, those so-called little things, they aren't really little. Susan Johnson and Pat McGovern, when they're out there working on that island, volunteering that time, I get all kinds of complaints. Why is the city spending money on that? Well, most of that is volunteer time. There is some city money involved with that, but most of it is volunteer efforts and businesses donate money to do those things. And they do actually make a really big difference when you come into a city, and it looks livable, it looks nice, it has that vibrancy to it. And the events we have in Going on the Green and the Art Work, the Arts and Cults Association, which we didn't have, you know, just a few years ago, we created that. And it's actually started to produce real results that people can see. That is really important. In Pittsburgh, if you've been to Pittsburgh recently, major turnaround in that city, what it looks like in Pitt, or what it used to be. Very impressive. Moving down the list quickly, the other thing that, and we talked about this before, about earmarking funds for public arts. Some places, as a percentage of their CIP, has to go into public art. It's a small percentage, but it generates some money to do that. There's a community in, I think it's Colorado, that did that. They redid a bridge, and it's got a very artistic design to it. People really, it doesn't look like the typical bridge. It's just a dull bridge. It's got the way the shapes of the metal and things of that nature has, has artwork to it. And they were able to do that by this fund that they had created. And the other, other communities are also using a percentage of their building permit fees, a small, like 1% or half a percent of that annually, they're putting into this fund. It builds up over time. They had $365,000, and they, they built a park around this bridge. It's got benches, and the way the shape of the bridge is, it's very inviting to be there, and people go there, you know, and they're walking through. And just those little things that eventually add up in a community and make it look that much better. Land banks, I don't think there's a whole lot of case in New Hampshire for those, but there's a lot of discussion about this. Rockville, Illinois, was an example of success with that. They have a lot of abandoned properties. 20% of the city had abandoned property. And instead of taxing it, they put it in this land bank, and the municipality still has control of who gets it and how it's to be redeveloped. And it's been hugely successful. We don't have that here, but if you hear about land banks, you know, maybe Berlin might have some value in that, but the rest of our state doesn't really have a need for that, I don't think. Multigenerational workforce, a lot of discussion about that, how to work with those and encourage those people and motivate those people, the different age groups that we have in the workforce. A lot of interest in housing, and it's actually, people have heard about what we're doing, which I was a bit surprised, about how we're looking to build housing for city employees, school district employees, and potentially nonprofit entities in this lottery system. And people want to know what kind of success we're gonna have. And I said, well, I'll let you know when we're done with that, because right now, you know, we're at the initial phases of that. Last item, public works accreditation. Ironically, I went to a session with about 30 other people, and the instructor never showed up. But public works accreditation is something that we're gonna take a real close look at, standardizing the operations down there. They don't have any SOPs. I want to have standard operating procedures for them, like we have in the fire department and the police department, and look at that accreditation process. Even if we choose not to do the full accreditation, at least look at the best practices in there and adopt those. I call it the poor man's accreditation solution. But we have nothing right now, and I want to look at that. So we're starting that process. It'll be in the strategic plan for next year. There's a self-assessment that we do and that sort of thing. And I was asked to facilitate that in the Hampshire Managers Association, have a session on that, to talk about that, that could be considered statewide. Last item I have, so that's the summary of the ICMA conference in terms of the updates that I had on that. I'd be glad to talk more, but there were other sessions I didn't get into great detail with, but a lot of good materials in there. And as I told you before, it would be good to actually take a city counselor with me, because other communities are doing that. They're bringing their mayor or their city counselor or city counselors with them, because there's so many sessions. There's 4,000 people at this conference this year. Next year, it'll be 6,000, because they go to Tampa. But there's so many sessions, you can't cover them all. And the best way to do that is to divide up, go to the different sessions, and then report back each night as to what we've learned and how we, how we're gonna implement that where we are here. So just something that you might have talked about that before, and we need to consider that. So, nothing else on that. I'm gonna go to Elm Street West. The mayor and I have been working with Twin State on that. We've had some discussions about that. We had a meeting with Twin State this week. I've got a meeting with Old Castle next week. And our goal is to try to get a resolution to potentially closing Elm Street West by the end of the year. That is our goal. And we're taking steps to get us further along that line to get there, and also allow them to operate their businesses without significant impairment. That's the direction we're going in, and we expect to be back to you soon, here probably in November, and look at some next steps to get that done. And that's all I have, other than the non-public we have.
Any questions with the manager? Okay. For the audience, we're going to go into a non-public session now to discuss personnel issue, and we will be coming out of non-public session and immediately adjourning after that. So we are effectively done with the public session, the meeting for the evening. Thank you very much for coming.